I um. Tried to catch him up a little bit on that, so. He's not, he's gonna be remote on the eighteenth, so we probably need to figure it out for you.
He's gonna be remote?
This gentleman right here. I said you're gonna be remote on the eighteenth, so we gotta get that thing worked out.
I'm not gonna be here on the first of March.
Ours is kicking off here soon. And March is normal.
And then we charge much higher rate.
We're gonna make a beginning. Father God, be praised, and we thank you for the blessings you've shed upon us. We're thankful for our county, thankful for our city, those that we serve, pray for our constituents and those our first responders, we pray you would keep them safe. Grant us wisdom and direction this today as we make decisions for the county, and in all our ways may we give you the praise you're worthy of, pray in Christ's name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon. The meeting notes for your review, any changes or alterations?
Move to pass the minutes as written and distributed.
On favor.
Aye.
Payroll for the month was three oh nine, eight fifty-six forty-one cents, with claims at six forty-nine, six fifty-three seventy-five.
Move the financials as written.
On a second.
On favor.
Aye.
Sure.
Um, as of today, we have sixty-five inmates in jail, thirty-six are pre-trial circuit, sixteen are pre-trial superior, thirteen DOC, and one F six. So definitely not complaining about jail numbers as of late. Just a couple things on the list, one, just giving you a heads up, we're, I'm looking at getting quotes on resealing and lining the west parking lot. Um, it's getting pretty bad, so this spring probably be a good time to get that done, it's not anything that really requires your approval, just letting you know, I'm gonna be taking care of that. Um, I've had one person already reach out to me, um, as far as getting some quotes for that, the, the east parking lot's brand new, uh, that was part of the construction, so that doesn't need anything. Uh, if anything, it would just be lines, but, so I'm looking into that. Also Friday, conserve, uh, they're the company as part of the renovation that automates everything, um, in the facility as far as HVAC, uh, and water, that's all computerized now, so, my maintenance guy's still learning, and so he spent a couple hours with me Friday, training me, um, on the system, sends out alerts if a boiler goes down or anything, you know, the motor goes down, those type of things, it alerts us. Uh, through email, I can log on, um, remotely if I have to, um, so I spend some time to try and be a backup to our maintenance guy, especially if he's off or something goes on in that arena, so. Uh, pretty interesting and, and neat going through that and learning that and seeing how all that works versus what used to be there, so. Um, also, I don't have a whole lot of information, we have noticed our water bill going up the last two or three months, um, the last time it did that, we had a water leak somewhere underground. Uh, that, um, I don't know if that's what's going on at this point, I did have the, um, water department come out, hook the computer up. Uh, we've noticed our bills being a little bit higher, uh, but they can come out and hook up a computer and give you hourly, um, yeah, nothing, based on the report I saw, nothing's consistent. Uh, it's hit or miss where we're, we're having higher water usage, so we're looking into it, don't, don't necessarily know what that is yet. Um, but just based on past history, the last time it was a, a water line, um, underneath one of the, the cell block cells, and we had to dig up the floor. The only reason we knew that, um, was the, uh, water retaining pits underneath the HVAC units were filling with water, and the floor was warm because it was actually hot water. Um, so, um, that was something we dealt with right at the beginning of reconstruction when we had to do that, so. If I learn anymore, I'll let you guys know, but just kinda seems a little bit off to me, um, not anything massive, but it's just been up the last three months, and we haven't done anything different to warrant that, so. But, other than that, I don't have anything else.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Good evening.
Sean.
Uh, we, we're in process putting our inventory and trying to get our package together for taking care of our fleet and our inventory. Uh, we've been out grading gravel roads, trying to take care of them as they thawed, I know they're a muddy mess right now, just bear with us. We're moving them, trying to let them dry, and hopefully we can get them finished up tomorrow. Our road conversions are still on hold, we are tending to them to release some water because we have not knocked down the front slope yet. We went out, removed a couple large dead trees, there's a picture of one on the back page there of showing how close it is to the road and it being dead, and, uh, with our lift truck that we got last year, we were able to take those down, uh, at our cost instead of a, a contractor's cost. Uh, there's the updates, they're the same from last week on the road conversions. The local tracks update is still on hold for the winter months. Bridge fifty-one, they are, this, this week and a half outlook is gonna be driving piles for the north end bend two, uh, false work and pouring concrete for Pier Two, and they're still on, uh, completion date of five one twenty-five. And we knocked off a couple items of our highway garage. But we still have, uh, the leak in the roof may be fixed, I was not aware, nobody let me know that it was complete, but I did make it available for them to work on, on a Saturday. The first.
It's the president.
Is there any questions with any of that?
The, uh, HVAC, you had meetings about that, TJ called and said that they've got a plan to put some new ducts or something in that.
Yeah, they were looking at taking our cold air returns out, that just fill up the plenum above the, uh, offices, they're gonna run a line down the interior wall and then branch it across to the, across the front offices with cold air return, and they think that bringing that warm air from the office area back to the furnace, will redistribute it and warm it up enough to get it to us with good temperatures, but they have not touched it yet, and I know they said they had everything maxed out, but over the last week since we had that meeting, it's, uh, actually blowing pretty good now, and it's warm, it's staying at the temperature. Uh, I was asking Lindsay, what's changed, she said nothing, but now she's got it.
Sub-zero outside.
I was gonna say, the last meeting was four degrees, today it's fifty-seven.
Well, and the wind too, I guess, because we, uh, we had, a contractor got up in the ceiling above there, and he said he's seen several areas with light shining through, so that's part of our problem with air coming through the building and not being sealed up.
You're getting, you're getting traction now between the subcontractor PCI and Jackson's.
Yes.
That's all I got. Okay.
And, uh, we got the bids back for trading in our skid loader, track loader for a new one. We had two come in pretty low, Kubota is, or Moore Farm Store has the Kubota at the six thousand trade, and Bobcat came in with a T sixty-six, uh, for our trade plus forty-nine twenty-five. I do, I have no familiar, I'm not familiar with the Bobcat T sixty-six, so I'm gonna ask if, uh, I can make time to go look at the Bobcat T sixty-six, and if it meets our qualifications, then accept that, if it does not, accept the Kubota. The red there is just one that didn't qualify with the dimensions we needed.
The two, the one you're looking at, the Bobcat is the yellow one, the T sixty-six.
Yes, those, those two there, one's the Kubota, one's the Bobcat, and, uh, I know what the Kubota is, it's what we have now, and I know it's capable of doing what we need, I'm just not familiar with the T sixty-six.
You'll look at that here in town? Just let us know.
Yeah. So basically, we're just approving that one of the two is what we're accepting?
I don't think you're accepting anything right now, I think the highway superintendent has come to you with two potential bids, and he's gonna go back and look to see which one meets his qualifications and come back again for us to approve a purchase as part of his program.
Sounds good. All right.
Thanks, Sean. We did get some right aways, right?
Yeah, thank you, I'm trying to catch up with some of the paperwork that's come through here today, we have three rights of way, these are all in regard, as Sean mentioned, to the, um, Meridian project. Uh, we have a Michael and Tanaka Taylor, um, who have executed their right of way, we have a Linda Tush, I'm not pronouncing that correctly, in regard to a revocable trust that owns property, and then we also have a James Grover, it sounds as if we've had a very good citizen who's gone out to assist us in that. That leaves, uh, um, we have a new owner, uh, on the one who had been owned by the mortgage company who foreclosed, um, we need to clean that up, and so now that we have a contact, uh, with that, that should go much more smoothly, and then we still have the one citizen who actually lives in Fort Wayne, who for whatever reason, never responded to any of our requests, so we'll have to follow up with her. But with the approval again of the Grover, uh, the Tush, uh, revocable trust, uh, and the Mr. and Mrs. Taylor, uh, I'd ask for approval of those three.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So it's just, uh, Archibald residence, is that the one that?
The Archibald property, we still don't have the, uh, and then we need to get the executed one from, I believe the name of the new owner is Stout.
Make sure we got that one rolling. Okay, thanks.
Good evening. Uh, first off, couple updates with some CCMG projects, um, Bridge sixty-five has had its second advertisement, um, in the newspaper last week and is still currently out for bid. Um, we're still on schedule to receive bids and open them publicly at the highway garage on the nineteenth. The Enroad CCMG, uh, we got that application successfully submitted last week, and we should have a notification on whether or not we were successful with that application, uh, towards the end of March. Um, one thing, this was kind of late notice, I think Lisa shared this with you guys, but we do have for our durable pavement marking, uh, federal aid project, uh, we did select Burgess and Niple, uh, for the PE services, and, uh, last week I worked with Brad McNair on putting together the LPA consultant contract. We submitted a draft to Endot, and it was approved to move forward with, so I didn't get it back until late Friday, afforded it this morning. I'm fine if we wanna wait until the next meeting to sign that, but the next meeting is the last opportunity to get that signed and get them under contract to meet the March first deadline.
I think we need to give Ted time to look through it, it's a book, it's like thirty-something pages.
It's, it is gonna be simply a standard LPA co- uh, consulting contract to be approved, it's in the correct name, Wells County, uh, and it's got the standard, uh, provisions, but yeah, I would prefer that out to be, to make sure.
Just reach out if you have any questions about any of it.
Then you'll present it next meeting.
Yep. And then kind of one thing that I've just been mulling around here the last week or so, um, just looking at the lit roads and bridges fund, I know during budgeting season last year, um, Jeff, I think you had asked if we were looking at increasing that, and I told you not for the twenty twenty-five budget. I do think it's something that we need to start taking a look at increasing moving forward, um, just based off of inflation, and that's not just the standard inflation, but also like highway construction cost is inflated even more than just standard inflation. So I kind of put some numbers down there in the bullet points for you guys to take a look at, just to kinda show you what that actually means, but basically as it stands right now, with that, with that budget amount being five hundred thousand a year, um, if you were to go after all of the community crossings that they allow you, that would match it, that's all it would do. So, um, it is an opportunity to utilize more funds for the roads and bridges if we increase to that, so, um, I'm gonna be doing some more work, looking at that and kinda figuring out what I feel like is justifiable, uh, but be presenting something here in the coming months.
Yeah, that fund, whatever goes in there, it comes out of somewhere else, so it's not like it's, goes in there and we've got extra funds we could spend, it's just, what bucket do we pull it out of to?
Understand.
Money out of whatever we're gonna do.
That's all I've got.
Thanks, sir.
We got a whole mass of people here. Leave it up to you, Scott, who you?
May I proceed?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, um, Commissioner President Stringer, Commissioners Vanover and Gerber and, and Auditor McCormick, thank you for the opportunity to share tonight. I'm going to read my presentation, not as an insult to you, but I think it'll be the most efficient use of your time, and I'll be certain to cover all the points that I hope to cover, so I'd like to proceed. Thank you for the opportunity to share some history, some thoughts, a perspective, and a request with you this evening. First, some history, on January eighth nineteen seventy, with a temperature at twelve degrees below zero, Howard Rich presented to the Bluffton Chamber of Commerce, of which he was a member, a challenge to build a community pool. One of the earliest contributors to what became a three hundred and twenty thousand dollar project was Mr. Edward Schaefer of Franklin Electric. Their thirty-six thousand dollar contribution would equal two hundred and ninety-two thousand eight hundred twenty-nine dollars in two thousand twenty-five money. Corning Glass pledged thir- twenty thousand along with many others, uh, according to the, uh, news banner reports, and this is a quote from the news banner. Initiated through the efforts of the Bluffton Chamber of Commerce, with donations being taken by the Wells County Foundation, the pool will be constructed by the Bluffton Park and Recreation Board for the equal use of all county residents. He later stated that he hoped the pool would be made available for use of all county residents at a fee low enough that all could afford. Howard Rich stated that he was gratified that Bluffton Industry and its leaders have shown again, they have a primary interest and concern for the quality of life in Wells County and in the families who live here. Constructed on land made available the, by the Wells County four-H Board, the pool is dedicated on Saturday, July twenty-one nineteen seventy-three. Its lifespan has extended some fifty years. As you are aware, the vision of the pool's service to the community has been significant, and support for a community pool for the future is very strong. That's evidenced by the results of a park department survey that I think were very telling. First of all, twelve hundred forty-four people responded with ninety-one point five percent rating the pool very important, seven point four percent somewhat important. Ninety-three percent of the pool, of the people thought the pool should ca- cater to children, seventy-nine percent to chi- to teenagers, sixty-two point four percent to adults, and forty-five percent to seniors. That equals well over a hundred percent, as we all know, so it's not a, it's not a totaling, it's a reflection of each age group. Reasons for supporting a new pool included recreation seventy-nine percent, exercise and fitness thirty-eight, social gatherings forty-nine point five-nine, and community attraction sixty-one point two percent. Second, some thoughts, when we worked to raise funds for Lancaster Park, we didn't approach county government because each city or town has some form or function of parks, and the cost is manageable for the most part within their budgets. Wells County has only one community pool, from its inception, both in vision and in practice, all county residents have been treated equally, and admission costs have been equally applied at a level all could afford. Our working, our work in seeking funds for the pool construction is progressing positively. The committee members, Chip Mann, Mark Miller, Josh Hunt, Blake Feeter, and myself have received a very positive reception and response. We've received interest at every level of the fundraising category. As, as you know, the city of Bluffton has committed approximately five million dollars to the project. Harrison Township, two hundred fifty thousand, and recently Lancaster Township at a hundred ten thousand. It is the rec- committee's recommendation that all committed, contributing levels of government be so listed on the donor plaque, not by the amount contributed, but rather that that governmental unit participated. Third, a perspective, as leaders of Wells County government, your responsibilities are huge. As a resident and taxpayer, I thank you for your willingness to serve. Too often, your decisions must address the cost of those who do wrong and or are a threat to our community. Our law enforcement is highly effective, the cost to keep our community safe is a necessary cost, and obvious would be higher absent strong fiscal management and effective enforcement. The two thousand twenty-five budget for the prosecution of lawbaiters, breakers, and jail expenses, housing those who were involved, were in excess of two point four million dollars. Again, I come in support of those expenses, and most of all, the effectiveness of those who serve us. Last, a request, the excellent quality of life we experience daily is dependent not on those who break the law, rather, it's determined by the great moms and dads and families, who work, pay their taxes, raise their families, and generally make life what it is every day in Wells County. In that sense, we're a lot like nineteen seventy. Howard Rich, Edward Schaefer, and many others set the standard. Albert Meyer, then president of the Board of Commissioners, praised the pool's support and expressed his support. We come tonight to ask the Wells County contribution of eight hundred thousand dollars towards the cost of the pool project. The exact cost and the particulars thereof won't be known until the bids are in. As we have shared with contributors, any excess funds, should they occur, will be kept, retained in the Wells County Foundation for maintenance and replacement costs as they occur in the years ahead. As I learned in my visit last week to Napoleon, Ohio, and I would share with you, if you get the chance to go there, please do, it, it's exciting even without water, uh, on a cold day. Such costs should immediately include replacement pumps and motors should, to be ready, should one of those fail, so the co- pool can soon be up and running again. Our fear is that absent that, you can lose a motor or a pump and be down a week, and in the middle of the summer, that's not a good thing. At a later date, some discussion should occur regarding how yearly costs not covered by pool revenue should be shared, that discussion is for another day. We hereby submit our request for your consideration of an eight hundred thousand dollar contribution towards the cost of the pool project to be paid either in two thousand twenty-five or twenty-six, or a combination thereof, along with what we hope will be your best wishes for the pool's service to the people of Wells County. Thank you for our consideration, your consideration, I'll be glad to try to answer questions if you have them. I'm sorry.
Tomorrow night's council.
Thank you.
President Stringer, Commissioners, Madam Auditor, I'm not quite sure what the appropriate term is for that. Uh, if you would just indulge me for a few minutes, I'd like to share my journey as it relates to this, to my perspective on this project. It's not a pitch, it's simply my experience, pull from it what you will, perhaps nothing, if so, that's perfectly fine, I won't be offended. When I opted to run for city council, I ran as a businessman, the owner of a manufacturing company. I signed the front side of a check, I made hard decisions, I risked my money, I managed large staffs of people, I put in long days, I wore many hats. I was committed to bringing business practices to government, I worked diligently on budgeting processes, and I strive to really understand how government is funded. I would often say, what is the knob that we can turn to generate revenue, how can we grow? I'm a data nerd, I often ask myself, how can I use data to make sound decisions? I would listen to Brandy speak about the pool in her presentation of her five-year master plan at every budget session, and maybe even a few times in between. She would emphatically highlight the issues of the pool. Honestly, I gave it too little attention. If pressed at that moment, I would have likely said, it loses money, its replacement cost is high, it's a bad investment, and I would apply my traditional rules of return on investment. After six years of doing this, I've learned a lot. My perspectives have changed as I've become better informed. What I would learn is that rarely does our government projects fit my preconceived notion of a proper return. All my rules fail all my tests, from business incentives to utility expansion, to housing private-public partnerships, there is no knob to turn. More assessed value does not generate more property tax revenue, higher employee counts don't mean higher revenues, tax rates cannot be raised by the whim of a city council, borrowing is restricted to certain isolated conditions, money cannot be moved from utility to utility, let alone the civil service. Utility rates have boundaries, not that my background was useless, government can spend better, budget better, negotiate better, organize better, hire better, manage better, and we do strive to get better every day, there's always work to be done, but I needed a new frame of reference. Good to Great is a book, I don't know if any of you are familiar with, but it's one of these books that I read, and it's influenced how I manage my businesses. One of the principal comments of this book is good is the enemy of great, there's a vast majority of good companies, and they remain just that, good, but not great. And one of the aspects of the Good to Great principle is, is this, is this three circle philosophy, and it talks about what are you deeply passionate about, what can you be the best in the world at, and what drives your economic engine? And the principle is here is a business should operate as mu- as often as they can at the intersection of all those circles. That's pretty easy for me as a businessman to, to think about, I know what my engineers are passionate about, I know what my employees like to build, uh, I, I know what my workers like to build, I know what my maintenance guys hate to work on, I know what they're passionate about. I've got an innate understanding of what my business can be, can be, may not be, but what can be the best in the world at, I know my- I know my market, I know my products, I know what niche I serve. Again, it's a pretty thing, easy thing to get my hands around. And I know what drives my economic engine in my business. What products deliver the most return? What investments yield the best return? And what metrics should I be looking at every day as I evaluate my business? But when I look at government, this is a little more difficult for me to wrap my hands around. So I got my first experience in, the first question, what is the city passionate about? And it may seem odd, but it got started with a branding survey. We came out with an initial logo for the city, and boy, did I feel passion. It wasn't the passion I had hoped for at the time, but it was passion from my city employees and it was passion from the residents of the city. They were not passionate about this logo. And we pivoted, and we came up with a new logo. And I met with my city employees, I met with my department heads, I met with my council. And what I learned through that experience is what the city of Bluffton was passionate about was our river and the work that we do on our rivers, our park systems, and the things that we bring in the community through those park systems. And that was the city's identity. That's what they felt good about. Those are the things when I asked, what does the city mean? That's what they first went to. And it turned into a new symbol, a new logo. And it taught me a fresh perspective from a city that we're passionate about our park system. So the next question is, what can we be the best in the world at? Now, that's an aspirational goal, I don't know that Bluffton will ever be the best in the world at anything, but I think there are a few things that we can look at. And I'll take you no more than to the Wells County Tourism website, where it rightly says that we were the 2021 Indiana Park and Recreation Association Outstanding Agency Award recipient. But that's not the only award we win in our park system. In fact, we win awards every year. Often, many awards every year. And it's something that this city has become proud of. And it's something that this city attaches its identity to. It is something that makes us proud. We've got a lot of city parks, and again, we tout them on our tourism page. We've got a great river greenway that the city operates, and we just recently cut a ribbon on a brand-new park up in Lancaster. And it's been very well-received. So with that, let me go to the presentation that you've got in front of us. But again, I'll come back to this principle later in the presentation. As Roger mentioned, this pool is 53 years old. It's got a slew of problems to it. We have patched and worked around these problems for literally over the last decade and a half. The bottom line is repair is no longer an option. The question that the city had to ask is, should local government provide a public pool as a quality of life asset? The city concluded that it was. And the city put forth the means to renovate this pool, to rebuild it. As Roger mentioned, we did a public survey. Over 1,246 responses. Roger mentioned that over 90% said the pool was very important. I don't know of any other item that city can spend money on that gets over 90% support of a public community. Roger talked about the age groups that the pool should cater to. I think what's telling about this chart is that the community wants the pool to cater to every age group because the community recognizes that the pool services every generation. We've got over 776 open-ended comments in the survey. Now, think about that. Over 776 people sat down and typed out a response. Most people clicked through a survey, they hit the yes or no, but when it gets to the point where you actually have to craft a response, don't take the time. Almost 800 people in this survey took the time to write a response. And I'm not going to read you the responses, but it's obvious from the responses that people drive through Wells County to get to another pool. They drive from Osian to Marion, they drive from Osian to Portland. They leave our county to go find a better venue. People want this asset. We looked at the services that this pool provided, and we asked ourselves, if this pool goes away, can these services be replaced by another entity, another asset in this, in this community, in this county? And the answer was frankly, no. If this pool goes away, these services go away. So the city decided that we were going to support building a new pool. Our park superintendent, our maintenance men, our city councilmen, local contractors, all gathered and we visited five communities that surround Bluffton. From New Haven to Columbia City, Portland, Marion, and Napoleon, Ohio. All of these cities went through a renovation similar to this. They all did a complete remodel. We listened to them, we understood their best practices, we understood what worked, what didn't work, what was cost-effective, what wasn't cost-effective, what generated revenue, what didn't generate revenue. If they had to do it all over again, what would they do differently? We set out to make sure that our vision of the pool had assets to meet every one of those generational groups. From toddlers, to teenagers, to adults, to seniors. And we feel like we've got, our vision has assets which support every one of those. When the city went through its budget time, we set aside a plan to devote $6.5 million towards this project. We submitted for a ready-to grant application for 20% of that, knowing that we would have to come up with the 80% local match. We've set this, the city has set aside $1.25 million out of its general fund cash reserves, and $400,000 out of its CEDAT cash reserves. And we are currently in the midst of bonding against the Adam Street TIF bond for an amount of over $3.5 million. The city is committing $5.2 million towards this project. That does not include the cost of issuing the bond, it does not include the interest expense on the bond. We, we're moving forward, we're going to do this. The asset that we end up delivering to the community is simply a matter of how much more can we bring to the table through all the interested parties. Request tonight, as Roger mentioned, is we're asking the county to support the project with $800,000. And the question has been asked to me, why $800,000, and what would that go towards? Principally, we're asking that that $800,000 matched with $200,000 from the Harrison Township go towards the purpose of a new pool house and parking lot improvements. Our original plan set aside $250,000 to do some remodeling of the pool house, but keeping the existing pool house. We have been asked by many people who have looked at this plan to deliver a new pool house, that if we're going to go through the expense of delivering a new pool, we want people to walk through a new pool house that represents the asset that we're putting behind it. We have modeled that pool house after the jury pool house in New Haven, although we've taken other aspects from the other communities. I've listed for you all the reasons a new pool house is appropriate. One of the key being is that the current pool house is simply not ADA compliant. I'm not going to read you the entire list, but a new pool house from our survey was rated as necessary by over 83% of our respondents. We also realize that the parking lot for this, for the current pool is not in sufficient shape, and we're constantly having attendees park out in the grassy area outside of our current parking lot. We don't think it's appropriate to spend $6.5 million not to have a parking lot that people can easily access and feel good about. So we're looking at improvements to the current parking lot and adding another 50 stalls. I'm going to turn this over to Brandy a little bit. I want her to talk a little bit about the assets that we're putting into this pool and how we think they represent the people who want to engage in it.
Yeah, so some of the things that we have added, we've talked to the other communities, and they felt like they were good amenities to have. So we've got like an aqua rock climbing wall, so that's something that would be attractive to the teens. We have the opportunity to purchase a aqua zip line, so it's kind of like the swinging from the tree like you used to do from a rope, so we could be bringing that back to the community. There is the potential of doing rentable cabanas so that we could be monetizing shade and maybe kind of closing the gap on any kind of deficit that we make at the end of the year. So there's opportunities for us to like generate more income by having that. The other thing that we have in the pool house that he didn't mention is the potential to have a party room, so we could be renting during the day and then doing back-to-back rentals for parties. So that's another revenue generating thing that we could be doing to like bring us closer to balancing out. Other amenities that we have is a vortex, is something that we've considered. And that is where water like swirls around. We've toyed with the idea of having any kind of like therapy jets or kind of massage jets in that circle. There's also a current flowing water that people could do water walking against. So that would be good for any kind of adults that want to have any kind of water resistance. Water is a low-impact exercise that people could do. So that would be something that we could give them. Currently in our pool now, we do not have a kiddie pool that had to close down years ago because we didn't have a filtration system that could keep up. So that's one of the major complaints that we get every year is that we've never had a spot for these little kids to go, and parents can't hold on to them in the deep end all the time. So we've been losing a lot of visitors due to that. So we have got a dedicated top play area. We want to put some toys in there, some sensory toys and water tables that they could be using. And we've also put in a dividing wall that will keep the bigger kids from running into that section. So one of the main features of this is that it's a zero-depth beach entry so that it's accessible, so people can roll in there or walk in there. It's not something that you have to have like ladders and things to get into. There are play features that we could be adding, and there's a variety that we could be shopping through and looking at, but they include slides and interactive toys. One of the features that we've learned from the different pools is that they really appreciate the dump bucket where it fills every couple of minutes, and then it like makes a huge splash on the kids below, the kids just like stand below that waiting for that to go off. But there's a lot of different kind of in-ground water spurts, kind of like a splash pad, but in the shallow area. We've also got a bay that is dedicated that could be a ninja warrior course. This is something no one else has, so this would be a feature that we would be the only one in the area to offer. The neat thing about this is that it is adjustable, so we could be changing the layout on a regular basis with the amenities to keep it challenging the whole time. We also, we're hoping to put in two slides. One is a speed slide, and that is a 20-foot straight-down drop, which is really exciting for the kids who want to go fast. The other one is called a serpentine slide, so it does lots of fun twists and turns. And then we do have what the swim team preferred, which is a 25-meter heated lap lane. We went with eight of those, because I don't know if you realize, but our swim team is like 150 kids. So we have got a lot of kids that participate in this. So we are able to adjust the depths of the water again, where we could bring back the starting blocks, where we had to remove those before when the rules changed, they weren't deep enough, so now we can put that back in. We also, survey said they wanted a diving board, it was something I was thinking about like not having because it's, a lot of pools are going away from that, but the community wanted that. So we did put in a deep well, kind of in the lower quadrant is what we were thinking of for that. And then we did add a stairwell over to the side, you can see where people could get in more gradually, so it's a more comfortable way of getting in instead of the ladders that not everyone can use.
So Roger's campaign to fundraise is principally to fundraise for these amenities. So the base water slide and the vortex that Brandy talked about, that is included in our base price. But all of these other features that you see on this page, the fundraising will go to secure those particular assets. So the $6.5 million, of which the city is contributing 5.2 plus the ready grant, gets us the pool, the vortex, and the water slides, but the rest of these other assets will be utilizing the fundraising campaign that Roger previously spoke about. But there's more opportunities for added scope. And I guess the fun thing about coming to people and asking them to help is that everyone's got their own ask, everyone's got their own opinion about what the pool ought to have or what the pool needs. So it gets to be a little bit challenging as you try to fundraise, to try to deal with all those additional asks. And some of the other asks that have been made upon us is a new playground, a new pavilion, new lounge chairs. It's been requested by a number of the other pools that we have a security system, to refresh our concession system, to put in a point-of-sale system, do additional landscaping, as Roger mentioned, to put a future maintenance escrow account in. So the amount of fundraising opportunity is high, and we will continue to try to raise those funds to meet all these commitments. And as Roger mentioned, we do have a 2026 commitment by the, it should be the Lancaster Township, not the Harrison Township. $110,000 by the Lancaster Township for 2026. That will be committed after other fundraising efforts and scoping are complete. Opportunity that we're looking at now for additional redevelopment. So currently, the Parks and Recreation Maintenance Garage sits on a parcel of land that's right next to the river. Part of the master planning process that we're finishing up now is focused on riverfront development. And we see this as a key parcel that could be used for future riverfront development. So we're looking at potentially pulling that maintenance garage off that parcel or abandoning that parcel and moving the maintenance garage to existing Bluffton property nearby the pool. We're also going to consider relocating the pool closer to Spring Street and potentially utilize the existing pool house, not demoing it, but utilizing the existing pool house, redeveloping that as the maintenance garage, and again, moving the pool closer to Spring Street. We think this could offer us a number of benefits, just giving the pool more visibility so that people are aware that the pool is there. But also, we could potentially start to do construction earlier as we can continue to operate the current pool in the back while we're beginning construction in the pool on the front side of the Bluffton property. I've included with you a pro forma income statement that stretches out to 2029. Currently, the operation of the pool loses about $95,000 a year. We cut that expense in half in 2026 when the new pool would open. We're projecting that'll get down into $55,000 range. And we are projecting that to creep back up, basically just due to inflationary measures. As Brandy talked about, there's a number of other revenue-seeking opportunities that we've got in this plan. The cabana rentals, other concession ideas, that the party room rentals, which may be able to further minimize that operational loss. I've included for you the timeline of the pool project. Our objective is to be able to close the 2025 season, start construction immediately thereafter, and be open by the 2026 season, and not lose a single swim season. That's what this plan is constructed around. The city is actively working towards this plan. We'll be going through bond ordinances tomorrow night to begin the TIF bond set work. And we're looking at getting contractors under contract in the mid-April timeframe. So I'll pause and answer any questions on any of that before we finish up.
Does that total cost, have the cost of moving the garage from the river to up here?
It does not, we're working on those numbers now.
Yeah, when looking at all the additions and additional scope, that would be my first bucket I'd pass it through, is which ones create revenue and which ones are just a cost. So concessions, obviously, security cameras just for safety reasons, point-of-sale system, those seem like would have to be in there, concessions at the pool is a. would have to be in there. Concessions at the pool is, has to be almost right anymore. And it's a moneymaker, I would hope. Any comments or questions? Guess my other one would be, and I know Roger said it's for a later discussion, but I want to see how it pays for itself. What can we do to get it to where it's self-sufficient instead of trying to find a way to pay for it long-term? Might not be the time or place for that conversation, but I don't want to just bury it that, hey, here's the money and then we talk about that at a different point. We know it's on the table of how we have to maintain it. So, I'd like to understand those costs, the cost-sharing, and maybe ways to mitigate those.
Guess my only question, the fundraising portion was not part of the package, other than seeing the dollars of the extras that you would like to incorporate into the project. I'd add it up. Do you have that number off the top of your head, what that number is for fundraising?
Roger, you want to speak to that?
Is it a million? Is it a million and a half? Or is it?
We are not at a point where we have firm commitments from many of the significant dollars. I can tell you based on the Lancaster Park experience, I'm pretty confident we're going to come through with a strong number. But we've only been at it about a couple of weeks, two and a half weeks. We're going to try to wrap this thing up hopefully by mid-February, but we need to get that figured out so that the ready grant is an accurate projection. But I'm, we do have a commitment, for example, the naming of the competition pool. The Hospital Foundation Board has committed $250,000 to that. That's a pretty significant number. We have some other opportunities that are in that range, but not to the point that, I don't want to tell you something that doesn't come true.
I totally agree. Appreciate that.
I'm one that always overestimated expenses and underestimated revenue until you saw the number. So, I want to be careful with that.
With the ready grant and Ryan leaving, will that jeopardize any of this?
So, we're in constant communication with the region. We had thought we'd be presenting to them this month, but their backlog is pretty huge. What they have basically told us is because we've shared this timeline with them was, hey, we're going to need to begin to spend soft money. Can you give us sort of some sort of guidance? And what they basically have said, you guys can start spending soft money. So, we're sort of taking that as a cue that we're in good shape. They have complimented us on our submission. So, I know Jessica's had a little bit of conversation with them. Jessica, I don't know whether you want to add to that at all?
Just exactly what you said. They said Wells County is pretty much killing it with their submissions. Their application is on point. Everything they asked for, we've checked all the boxes. And they're just flooded with ready applications. But we've gotten really good feeling from our
Does that 6.5 include the new building?
The 6.5 does not include the new pool house. So, the ask today would be the 800,000 plus 200,000 from Harrison Township would fund the pool house and the parking improvements.
So, the 6.5 is the base with the water slide and the vortex. And what's the total of all the additionals? Any idea off the top of your head?
Didn't add, I didn't add them up, Jeff.
It looks like it's about almost 8 million total.
That's about, that's about, that's about right.
8.8 total, if you got everything on here and the new building and the parking lot.
Yep.
Could I add a comment? So, it's not to be misleading in any way. We, one of our options in terms of funding is the naming of the pool house. Now, this is the Wells County Pool. So, Wells County names in it. But we would, that money, we haven't said to anybody, your contribution's going to go here. We are talking about naming rights and I didn't want you to later think, well, he misled us. So, thank you.
Guess my last one and be more towards the operation thing is that if we go to 8.8, does that escalate the cost to operate the pool with these different amenities?
It does not. So, the operational cost that we put in the pro forma assumes all the amenities
Questions, Blake?
No, I briefly brought it up in regards to the idea I had in my mind of a number and then trying to incentivize, I guess, if you want to call it that, from a standpoint of contributions, donations to match, you know, similar to what the Food Bank does. You know, somebody contributes 20,000 and we'll match that 20 if we can get 20 back and we can, you know, build on that. Would that entice anybody, you know, to come in at a level higher than
Sure.
even what we are throwing around right now? I don't know. I'm just, again, it's part of the fundraising side of it and been involved in a lot of different ones. But it seems like if you can attach it to, say, contribution two-for-one or three-for-one or one-for-one or whatever, would that make a difference?
We're at a point in our campaign that the contacts we've already made, I don't hold out hope that we could hit a new goal. However, if the county wanted to suggest, and this is above my pay grade, so I'm just saying, if the county wanted to suggest, we'll commit 800,000, but we need the private contributions that our committee's working on to reach that level. I think that could be a challenge we could work on.
Yeah, it doesn't have to match it, but it could be a significant portion of it or any portion of it. So.
Basically, we need a $2.3 million raise, right, between the county and to get all your amenities to get to that 8.8?
That's, that's, that number sounds in the ballpark. Again, I don't have the math in my head, but that's.
So, the funds, if we contribute, come out of lit rather than economic development? Have you talked to the council? Or you're going to talk to the council tomorrow about?
So, we've given a version of this presentation to the council already. We're going to go back to the council for a second time tomorrow. But they, most of the content that you've seen tonight,
I like the idea. I mean, every community has a pool, right? Just how much we want to put into it. But Scott, you and I have talked a couple of times. My, I guess I can't take the business hat off yet. I still believe that there's opportunities to be profitable. I come from cities, whether I was in Utah or in Kentucky, where Parks Department paid for roads. That's how much money they made. We played co-ed kickball as adults. We had all the co-ed sports. We had anything and everything. Parks, and I believe that the parks are an attraction to Bluffton, but I don't see many of those extra activities. So, how could we generate additional income to help pay for those things? The parks can be a tough one, or the pool, because it's only open for a few months out of the year. And I know, Brandy, you run into lifeguard issues. Are we, Jessica, are we working with the schools to have lifeguard training and some of that stuff to get more, more people that are already certified in that? My, two of my daughters were lifeguards and they worked their butts off during the summer because nobody else was there. Are we working with the schools to get a deeper bench of lifeguards that can help out with YMCA, the school pools, and this one for the summer? And then, are we attractive enough to get enough kids that want to come be lifeguards? And then, even some adults for that span where school starts back up and the pool is still open. So, those will all be things that I'm trying to push on that we can help from the EDC side too to incentivize, but.
Something better we can do with that part. But I also think that in the past, the pool house, our pool has been insufficient in the attraction category for a while. But it's serving a beautiful purpose for our community, even as unattractive as it is. It still serves a great amount of children, adults, all the, like, it doesn't matter the age. It's servicing them. From a mom with teens, they preferred for a while to go to other pools because they were newer, because that's what people do. Pack their kids up in their minivan. I ruled Tojay County to go to the newer pool where it has little toddler sections. The teens love the big slides. Again, I'm a mom of teens, not toddlers, and that's kind of what they like. But my kids still like the Wells Community Pool. They like being close, running out. They love to run to bunnies, grab stuff, and then come back. So, yeah, I think there's absolute improvements that can get made and will be made there. And Brandy's, I mean, she knows what people are wanting. I think it's just a matter of like in the scope of it, how can we make that money? How can we be attractive? One is we're putting it all forward right now with the new facility. And then now, I mean, really, it's a wish list. What can we do? Let's get, let's get going. Let's do all the things we want to do because those will be the things that bring in the money. Those will be the things that close the gap of profitability without a doubt. So.
Yeah, Jeff, I can just say from talking to all the other communities that we went and visited, one, none of them were making money. Not, again, not from my business perspective that we can't continue to work in closing the gap, but we talked to all of them about what would be other revenue streams that they don't have. The cabanas was one of them. So, we've added that to the plan. At the end of the day, what drives this economic engine is people showing up.
Out of county here is a little more, right?
So, you know, you have to have, you have to have amenities that compete, if not exceed what they can get, you know, elsewhere. That's what we've tried to do here, is try to make sure that we at least had amenities to compete and then add some amenities that would push us, push us over the top. Most of the other communities saw their attendance double when they did the remodel. That's what we have in our pro forma income statement. The key is, can we maintain that? Because we start to show it starting to taper off, like the excitement had waned and then starts to taper off. If we can keep that excitement and keep drawing people, then that, then that business model starts to get better and better.
Could I have one more thing? I want to take my hat off to Brandy for the vision she's had for the park system, for the work she's put into this. And I know I only know part of the story. But when I send an email early, I get a response by five in the morning. And I appreciate her commitment to this.
You're stealing some of my thunder coming up, Roger. Other questions? All right, if I can just indulge you for a couple more moments, just to finish my opening thoughts. So, the final circle here is what drives the economic engine. And as government, you know, what I struggle with all the time is how do we build a dependable resource engine to fund government? What does that look like? And I've sat through all of the, all of the pitches. You know, we do a housing survey. We do a tourism survey. We do a talent attraction survey. And you know, there's a school of thought that the engine is driven by business growth. And to some degree, it does. I've got an attitude that, that if business leaves, city dies. Cities die. But I also believe that cities thrive with community and that you need both. And so, I've constantly sort of challenged myself. It's what is it that really gets us the best return on the dollar? We can bring a new business in town and we can grow AV. It doesn't generate more property tax revenue. Businesses can hire 400 people, but if they don't live in Wells County, it doesn't deliver a single dime of local income tax revenue. We've talked about housing. We've got new development north of town. We've got new development south of town. We've got a relatively brand-new apartment complex. We've got a senior apartment complex coming. We've got township develop, a townhome development coming. We've got housing opportunities that are in play right now. We've talked about talent attraction. We've talked about marketing for talent. We've talked about paying people to move to Wells County to bring talent. And we've talked about tourism. You know, I hear we need more heads in beds so we can generate more tourism dollars. But when it all, it sort of all comes back to me that maybe it's just quality of place. You know, I know when my wife and I travel, the areas that we remember most are the areas that had cool stuff, right? They go out to a free concert. They go out to a cool restaurant. There's some cool amenity in town. There's something we can take our kids and grandkids to. Nobody wants to move to a place that doesn't have amenities. Place is defined in a number of different ways. It nurtures and defines our community identity. It fosters frequent and meaningful contact. It draws talent. It promotes a sense of comfort and creates improved accessibility. And it builds and supports local economies. Again, I've challenged myself because I'm a data nerd, right? What drives the resource engine for government? And in fact, people have looked at this and really asked, can quality of place be an economic driver? Can that be the economic driver? And the conclusion that some of these studies have reached is yes, it can. That if you have high quality of place, that that can be the economic engine. Most studies find that areas with high levels of quality place factors have higher rates of population and they have higher employment growth. People want to live in areas that have high quality of place. So, at the end of the day, you know, for me, it comes back to these three circles again. What are we deeply passionate about? What can we be the best in the world about? And what can drive our economic engine from a government perspective? From my city lens, I can tell you my city is passionate about our parks and trail system. We are literally award-winning. Not that we can't be better, but we're literally award-winning. And I am coming to the belief that maybe, perhaps, what drives the economic engine of government is quality of place. But ultimately, the most important part is that going from good to great is not a function of circumstance. Greatness is largely a matter of conscious choice and discipline. Business leaders can use money to buy talent. Government, on the other hand, must often rely on people who are typically underpaid relative to the private sector. Or in some case, Roger, volunteers who don't get paid at all. The key variable is who do you have on the bus? Great organizations have people who I call are productively neurotic. Those who are self-motivated and self-disciplined. Those who wake up every day compulsively driven to do the best they can because that's simply part of their DNA. This person to the right of me fits that description. Roger's right. An email goes out, I get an answer at nine o'clock at night, 10 o'clock at night, 10:30 at night. I'm typically in my office between 5:30 and 6:30. I'm supposed to be the first person to send the email. I'm no longer the first person sending the email. I'm no longer the first person replying. She is endlessly working on our parks and rec system. Can it Can it be better? Sure. Can it be more profitable? Sure. I don't know anybody who works harder, watches every dollar as closely as the person to the right of me. And it's that kind of passion that as president of the city council, I'm gonna pour, I'm gonna push resource to. Because I know that that DNA will deliver results. And I'm asking you to trust me and her, that with your contribution, it'll do the same. Thank you.
I, I see it no different than putting in, it may seem a little career, but electric lines or sewer lines or things like that. It's things that help develop. I think the one thing I would say is that we have the talent in our community. We're just letting them leave. I'll still, to this day, say that our youth is the talent that we don't capture the most of. And if it's a pool that keeps them here, or it's additional jobs that keep them here, I don't care. I just wanna find a way to keep them here. I think it's a mix of all. We've gotta give them an opportunity for a good living, working with good employers that we have some of and some that we need to develop. We need to develop the industrial side, we need to develop our school side, we need to develop this attraction side, so. I don't have a problem putting it in there, but I look at Westfield, Indiana, spend a lot of time there, have kids that travel, ball, everything. And Westfield used to be a little town like we are. It's, it's sports and, and parks and recreation that has made Westfield what it is. And Westfield's one of those towns I'm, I'm talking about that's paving roads off the revenue they make from sports and that. We have beautiful parks, we have all sorts of things going on. I'm, I'm with you Brandy, I think it's just maybe giving you more resources. Maybe that's where the county steps up at some point, that you're staffed with more people to get things. Because I've been to softball games where there are no concessions. I've been other places that I just think there's room that we can make it to where it is profitable. So you're coming to us and have created all this cash, what should I do with it?
So, I, I think that, that goes exactly back to the three circles, right? I mean, focus on what you can be good at, what you can be best at, and make sure you give the resources to that and deliver. And I think this is a case where if we focused on that, we can deliver just what Westfield delivered. But, but too often, we're not, we're not disciplined enough to do that. And, and so I'm sort of asking that we, we create some discipline in that respect and focus on it.
Then the only additional I'll ask for is I'd like to see a layout of, if we're buying a pool house, what does it look like? You guys have an idea?
We, we do. So, so we, we've got all the drawings from the jury pool house. That's our starting point. We've obviously got some recommendations we wanna make that change that a little bit. But that's, for the most part, we've got that in front of us to work with. We just need to know that we've got the funds to, to be able to build it out.
I'll leave it up to you guys, I don't know, there has to be a vote tonight. I like the idea, um, but there might be some time that you need to review that with the pool house. Do you not either?
How committed are you in the location where it's at currently? And to the last picture you showed on your screen, moving it closer to Wayne's.
So, so
Which is?
So the next phase of this, it's a great question Blake. I mean, the next phase of this is, is for us to, to go through our scoping period. We're operating this on a build-operate-transfer method. So the next phase is to go through our scoping period. That will be one of the questions that, that is posed to the developer and the scoping committee, is, is what are the costs and the benefits to move that forward? I think, I think we're starting to realize that there, there may be more benefits to moving it forward than keeping it in its current location. It's, it's all Bluffton-owned property. So, we've got the option to do that. But I'd like to, I'd like to speak to the developer and the contractors before I can give you the final answer. But I think right now, we're leaning more towards pulling that forward. It'll allow us to start construction earlier. And again, gives us the opportunity to take the current pool house and potentially redevelop that into a maintenance building for the park system. And we think having that maintenance, maintenance building in close proximity to the pool makes a lot of sense. And that location is more centrally located to the rest of our park system than the current location. And, and again, we love the idea of freeing that parcel up for potential riverfront development. So we see a lot of pluses there.
What does a build-operate-transfer, what benefit does that give you?
So the build-operate-transfer process, I always talk about, uh, project cost. We always get three project costs, right? We get one at the engineering phase, that's, that's cost number one. And cities have to figure out, okay, how do we fund price number one? We get price number two at the bidding phase, right? So we send out private bids, bids come in, they're always higher than the engineering estimates, that's price two. And then we scramble to figure out how we close the gap. And then price three is act, after we get through all the change orders, once we go through the actual construction phase. So the build-operate-transfer process, um, you, you go through an RFP process, which we've been through. People, uh, submit proposals to participate in the process. And then you pick a developer. And then a scoping group works with that developer. You go through all your designs, you work through all your designs, you figure out what your budget is, you figure out what design can fit within your budget with the contractor or contractors. And then the contractor has to give you a final guaranteed price. That is the price. There's one price. They are bound to that price, any change orders is on them. The city can always ask for a, a broadening of scope and obviously that will move the price. But once that design is locked down and they've given you one guaranteed final price, it, it's on them to deliver to that price. So we get one price. And we've got flexibility to select the developer.
You haven't selected one yet?
Uh, we have. It's, it's James Jackson. Now, we still have the opportunity, should we get through the scoping period and we conclude that that proposal doesn't work for us, we're not bound to that contractor, we can, we can toss that aside and begin a new scope with a new contractor. But ultimately, we're trying to get to a final guaranteed price.
Do we have anybody, if we put eight hundred thousand in here, do we have somebody that's on the board to, of?
Every entity that's committed to donating to the cause has a member on the scoping committee. In fact, we preemptively put a member of city council or county council on the scoping committee. So Harrison Township's got a member on the scoping committee. Land Cacher Township's been offered to, to put somebody on that committee. So the, the county could have somebody else on the scoping committee as well.
Preferences, you wanna make a motion today, or?
I'd be happy, I'd be happy to make a motion today.
I would too.
Okay, um, I'll make a motion to fund the, uh, project as stated here, so.
Eight hundred thousand? No second.
All in favor?
Aight.
Three zero.
I mean, we appreciate him.
Thank you.
With the, uh, the operation piece still on the table, right?
This question as well?
He wanted it all.
Alright, thanks.
You're welcome.
Sir.
Thanks guys.
Yeah.
Good to see ya.
You bet, good to see you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sir. You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work.
We are down to resolution for tax sale properties.
In your package, you should have a resolution for the Board of Commissioners, uh, the county of Wells, to assign a tax sale certificate as political subdivision pursuant to Indiana Code. Uh, and we are assigning that to the request of Commissioner Gerber to the town of Penedo. This will occur with a substantially similar resolution from the town of Penedo. We have exchanged our version with their council, their councils responded with their own. I believe Lisa provided you with that, if she didn't, we can't. My understanding is that that's gonna be going before the, uh, common council for the town of Penedo, uh, at their next meeting. That's in their current later this week, so I'd ask you to approve the resolution.
Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aight.
That is Resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh one.
Saying it's our first one.
Oh, yep.
Um, along with that, um, we should amend the motion to give, uh, President Stringer the authority to sign the assignment upon the approval of both boards.
So moved, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Aight.
Annual report?
I have, yes, I emailed you the twenty twenty-four annual report for Wells County. And I have in your package just what will be advertised in the newspaper for that. But it has not been submitted, I need your approval before I can submit it.
I'll make that motion.
No second.
All in favor?
Aight.
Aight.
I guess the paper will decide when it goes in.
Is this just a one and done in the paper? Okay, thanks.
And then the cemetery board appointment, I had sent you another application that was submitted.
Yeah, I think I text you guys, Bill Doughty and I had a conversation and they, one in more time.
Let it sit again.
So, let's wait till our eighteen, February eighteen meeting.
Right.
Hopefully they'll be back in touch by then.
He'll be here on the eighteen, hopefully.
Hopefully. I will fi- I will follow up with a text message to Chris or Bill and ask him if they're bringing in a recommendation.
Is that it? Everybody in the audience have any? Lisa? Commissioner Gerber?
Nothing.
Yes, sir.
Ted?
Just to bring to your attention, we received a notice from the Indiana Department of Environment and Management concerning potential, um, discharge at the highway garage. We're investigating that, we'll talk to our insurance carriers, uh, to see if there's any coverage. Uh, but if you guys had a chance to look at that, any expertise or knowledge you have would be appreciated as we go through that process.
I'll run down there tomorrow and take a look.
That notice came out on January twenty-ninth, which would have been, um, last Wednesday, I believe. And they've given us thirty or forty-five days to provide, uh, a remediation or proof of a remediation. Just so you know that it's time-sensitive.
Okay.
Sean's been in contact with them, but should run.
That was back in December, we just received the additional notice of remediation. So yeah, our highway superintendent has been actively communicating with the department, uh, about this issue in the past.
I was gonna ask him, but I let that one slip, so, we'll meet him tomorrow. Anything else? That was it.
Motion did you?
Motion did you?
Second.
Alright, thank you.